Ball please.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Councilman, I mean Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
And Councilman Womack.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Dr. Martin Thielen, Senior Minister at First Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Would you join me in a prayer? Eternal God, in the midst of a very busy day, we pause for just a moment to acknowledge you and to offer thanks for all the gifts you provide. This evening, at the city council meeting, we are especially grateful for this community. God, thank you for those who came before us, who dreamed of a community in this place, and who built it. Thank you for those who currently serve, who teach in our schools, who work for our city, the people who fill our churches, business folks, who provide jobs and services. God, thank you for all who work so hard to make this such a good place to live. Lord, as we express our gratitude for our community, we ask that you will help all of us to make it an even better place for all the citizens who live here. Especially tonight, we thank you for our city council. God, we ask that you would bless them, both as individuals and as a group, tonight and throughout their terms, so that they will in turn be a blessing to the residents of Cookeville. We pray in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Is there any changes or corrections?
There are no changes.
No changes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, item four, at this time, I'd like to do a presentation and recognition for Tori Cannon. And we're very, very proud of Tori, and I'm going to read this proclamation that we have for her. Whereas Victoria Tori Cannon has earned the esteemed Congressional Gold Medal Award for Service for Efforts for the Betterment of Her Community, and whereas the award not won but earned through a series of setting and achieving goals in four program areas, voluntary public service, physical fitness, personal development, and expedition exploration, and whereas Tori's exemplary dedication and true spirit of achievement have shown through exceptionally with her journey to acceptance of the award on June 17, 2015, in Washington, DC, and whereas Tori's commitment to public service, as well as her desire to earn the award is a testament of her youth devotion to community, paving a path to being future leaders of tomorrow, now therefore I, Mayor Ricky Shelton, Mayor of the City of Cookeville, on behalf of our council, do hereby proclaim a profound sense of appreciation to Victoria Cannon for her dedication and commitment to self, community, and others, and do wish her much success in her future endeavors. Congratulations, Tori. Would you like to talk a little bit about? If you'd like to go up and tell us a little bit about it, that'd be great. We'd like to hear about it.
Well, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
The award itself takes at least 24 months to complete. When you commit to doing the award, you have to stick with it, and you have to serve for at least 24 months. You can do it for as long as 10 years before actually receiving the award. What you have to do for each of the required areas is 400 hours in public service over the course of two years, 200 hours in physical fitness, 200 hours in personal development, and a seven-day self-planned expedition or exploration of another culture. Now, for me, what I did for public service, I spent most of my time in libraries and local schools, improving literacy for elementary-school-age kids. I particularly worked with some really, really advanced 4th graders in the community. I actually started a book club there that is being carried on by someone else who's going to do the Congressional Award as well, that I kind of recruited and brought into that now that I'm leaving for college. That way, the kids would have someone else to teach that for them when I'm not here. For personal development, I did classical music, which is something I've done for the past eight years. I've been classically trained in opera for that long. For physical fitness, I did dance with the center, which is just down the street, and I did ballet, and jazz, and modern, and tap, and all of those lovely genres. And then for my expedition and exploration, I spent about nine days in France, Italy, and Spain, learning the language and talking with locals and learning the culture and letting them kind of just take me around and show me all of the things you might not see on the beaten path, getting to see lots of very small communities that live kind of out on the outskirts, that aren't always noticed when people go, and learning the different like culture differences, even within individual nations, which is really interesting. And when I brought that back, the main thing I focused on with, as far as like analysis goes, was the difference between Europeans and Americans, and also the similarities. That's about it.
Well, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, and I'll tell you this, she also is a great singer. She sang the National Anthem for us to kick off the Fourth of July, and we had a fellow there, Larry Stone with Stonecom, who is the, has done the NFL stadiums for years and said that was one of the best renditions he's ever heard. So, she's a great singer as well. So, if you'll stay around, we'll have a picture after the meeting. Great, all right. Thank you very much.
Rick, he's got a mayor, Mr. Mayor. I don't know where you're going off to college, but you go spread your wings for a while, but make sure you come home.
Yeah, make sure you come back.
You make sure you come home.
Great, thanks, Tori. All right, item five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on July 16, 2015. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item six, consent agenda. A, set a date, September 3, 2015, for a public hearing on ordinance 0150821, amendments to the zoning code by revising certain provisions of Section 205 and 219 relative to off-street parking requirements and high-density residential development in the CBD. And item B, consider an awarding bid for anthracite for the Water Quality Control Department. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion seconded, any discussion? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, item seven, A, new business, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance 0150719, rezoning from RS 20 single-family residential to RS 5 single-family residential property consisting of 10.48 acres, located on the corner of Old Sparta Road and Bob Bullock Road, identified as parcel 24.02 on tax map 96. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the general location of the property. See down here, it's the southern part of the city. Here's a closer view of the property. And this request was initiated by the property owner, who's Aaron Bernhardt. Here's an aerial view of the property. I'll come back to that if we need. This will be looking up Old Sparta Road, and this is looking east on Bob Bullock Road. Located to the north and south of this property are single-family dwellings, and to the west is a seven-unit modular home development. As you can see from the map on the screen, that it's continuous with properties zoned as RS 20 on all sides, and this is the modular home development that I was referring to. The modular home development is a legal, non-conforming use existing prior to the property being annexed. The eastern portion of this property, this section in here, is encumbered by steep slopes and a small stream, which limits its developed potential, and then you can see the city limit right here on the extreme eastern corner of the property. The RS 20 district is intended to provide a low-density residential environment in areas where public wastewater services are not available. A minimum land area of 20,000 square feet per dwelling unit is required in this district. The RS 5 district is intended to provide a moderate-density, single-family residential environment where public wastewater services are available. A minimum land area of 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit is required. Public wastewater services have recently been made available to this subject property. Our 2030 plan primarily depicts the properties as being suitable for lower-density residential development. At the time the plan was prepared, public wastewater service was not available to the parcel. The property is located in an area that was annexed in 2000. It's noted in our 2030 plan that to accommodate our future growth potential, it's expected that large areas that we've annexed since 2000 that are currently zoned RS 20 would be rezoned to accommodate this future growth. The petitioner has submitted a proposed subdivision plan, which is depicted on the screen. Should it be rezoned, it indicates a total of 41 lots for single-family detached dwellings. On this 10.48-acre tract, this represents an average density of 11,130 square feet per dwelling unit. The depicted lot sizes range from 5,000 to a little over 5,000 square feet to nearly 30,000 square feet. Also, what's interesting in what the planning department is excited about this development, it depicts an interior street where all the lots will be accessed but five, so there'll be no backing out into Old Sparta Road or to Bob Bullock Road. The proposed rezoning was unanimously approved by the planning commission as recommended by the planning department.
Okay. This time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone that would like to speak to this agenda item about this rezoning? Okay. We'll close the public hearing portion. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion among the council? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Consider on first reading ordinance 0150820, amending Title VIII, Chapters 3, 4, and Title XI, Chapter 6 of the Cookeville Municipal Code relative to alcohol and beer. Mr. Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance change will amend various sections of Title VIII, the city's municipal code. Try to run through these and be as brief as I can, starting with Title VIII, Section 8, 301, related to definitions. It will include the definition for a retail food store. Retail food store being establishment open to the public with at least 20% of its taxable sales derived from the retail sale of food and food ingredients for human consumption and taxed at the rate specifically provided in TCA 676228A, and has at least 1,200 square feet of retail floor space. So that would establish retail food store. This one is particularly related to the upcoming change, July 1 of 2016, related to the sale of wine in grocery stores, retail food stores. Wine is defined as well, will be defined based on this change in the ordinance to mean the product normal alcoholic fermentation of the juice of fresh, sound, ripe grapes. I'm not going to go through the whole definition. And it also establishes, per state law, the definition for high-alcohol-content beer. So that will be incorporated into the definitions in Title VIII, or Section 8, 301 of our municipal code. Section 8, 302 would be amended, that section would be amended to be applicable to all sales of wine in retail food stores. So it sets our code up so that wine in retail food stores would be allowed. Section 8, 303 extends the inspection fee that's established on retail package stores. That 5% inspection fee would also be applicable to sales of wine in retail food stores. Then in Section 8, 306, part of the wine in retail food store, the sale of wine in retail food stores, those stores would have to receive a certificate of compliance from the City of Cookeville, and this basically states, it adds Section 9, that no certificate of compliance for the retail food store would be granted unless the retail food store complies with TCA 573802 and as subsequently amended. So they're going to have to, with respect to sales and size of that store, and that goes back to the definition of the retail food store, the 20%, as well as 1,200 square feet. So it changes that section to basically say they're going to have to comply with state law related to sales and size related to that store. And then in Title VIII, 8, 307, there's an application process the city would establish, and the retail food store would submit the application, fill out the application that we provide to them. We would be doing a background check on the applicant, who's in direct control of the business, would want to know the name of their employer on that application, the statement whether or not that applicant has been convicted of a felony within the last 10 years, the physical address of the proposed retail food store, total square footage of that floor space accessible to the public, the distance of the proposed food store to the nearest retail liquor store. That's applicable for one year, from July 1 of 16 to 17. There's some issues with that, so we're asking those questions. Copies of any covenants related to the shopping center, if the retail food store is located in the shopping center, we'd need to see those covenants, and just to agree to comply with all the Cookeville Municipal Code related to alcohol and beverage sales, as well as TCA 573. So that's part of the application process. We also establish a $400 fee, so we can do the background checks on those individuals that would be in control of the business, and to do the other inspections to make sure they're in compliance with our code, as well as the state code. Title VIII, 401, and Section, and 401 deals with beer. It's basically redefining, or the new definition in state law related to beer. And right now, the definition of beer is essentially, beer contains no more alcoholic content of not more than 5% by weight, and that's the definition until January 1 of 2017. After January 1 of 2017, the definition is 8% by weight, less than 8% by weight. So we'll establish that in our code related to the definition of beer. We're also in Section 8, 407, related to the applications for a beer permit. 8, 407, 2, we're deleting that in its entirety and substituting that the applicant shall state as to whether he or she has been a citizen or lawful resident of the United States for at least one year, immediately preceding the date of applying for a beer permit in the manner prescribed by TCA 575103A. So that's the new law related to residency, and they just have to be a resident for one year in the United States. 8, 407, 8 would be deleted in its entirety, and the new section would be substituted, that the applicant would state as to whether the permit for the sale of beer is sought for consumption on premise, or for the sale to be carried off the premise with no consumption on the premise. And then it exclude, that, this exclusion is to the manufacturer of a beer, which would be, they could consume the beer on premise or sell it for off-premise. And that goes back to the recent changes in state law related to microbreweries. So we'll be adopting that, so that in, microbreweries would be allowed in Cookeville, as long as they meet our zoning codes. And then in Section 8, 408, related to permits, we'd be adding the language that a manufacturer permit may be issued for the sale and manufacture of beer to any manufacturer that meets the requirements of various sections of TCA, so they could manufacture beer, sell it at wholesale, sell it at retail, on-premise or off-premise consumption. Again, this goes back to the microbreweries. It also, Section 8, 408, would establish a 15% inspection fee per state law on the sale of high-alcohol, high-alcohol-content beer, as well as a permit may be issued related to golf courses. Currently, we don't have a permit, or authorization in our code that would allow us to issue permits for golf courses for beer. So this would establish that, where a permit could be issued to a golf course for consumption of beer on the course itself, the nine holes, 18 holes on the golf course itself, beer cannot be consumed in the parking lot of the golf course. So it establishes that permit as well. And then the last change is related to Title XI, 601, related to municipal offenses, to where consumption of alcohol, or the beer on a golf course would not be a municipal offense. So that's all the changes. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I'd recommend approval.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion among the council about this? Yes, sir.
Mayor, Mike, about the, as it relates to Section 8, 306, the certificate of compliance that would be issued by the city, tell a little more about that process. Is that something that would take council or beer board action, or is that an internal matter that would be decided within the confines of a particular department?
It would be decided internally. We'll do the background check. The city will certify two things related to the wine and, the sale of wine in retail food stores. We're going to certify that the applicant has not been convicted of a felony, so we'll do the background check, and then we'll certify whether or not that store meets our zoning requirements. There's some other restrictions related to distances to retail package stores and the square footage, but our primary certification is related to the felony, the background checks, as well as the, I lost my train of thought. The floor space is part of it as well. But the background check and the zoning is the primary certification made by the City of Cookeville. That will not go to the, to our alcohol beverage board. It'll be made internally, that decision, as long as they comply with that, then state law is that the mayor would certify that letter back to the state, certify that application, and give the compliance letter back to the applicant, who would submit that with their application back to the state. And then the state's going to basically double-check some of the same things that we're looking at as well.
So we're not requiring council action or?
We're not requiring council action or beer board action, anything like that.
My other question, Section 1, 6, retail food store, 20% of the sales taxable from retail sale of food, how, does that get down to your mini-markets? Does that, how small? We know the Kroger's of the world, Food Lion's, I mean, that's.
Potentially, it could. The definition in 676228, I think that's the code related to the sales tax, that specifically talks about non-prepared food, so the restaurants are kind of out of this. It's for food that's not prepared, and that has the specific tax rate of, the state tax rate, I think, is 5% on that food. So we would have to look at that, consider that. But it potentially could be those smaller convenience-type stores, but they would have to have the 1,200 square feet as well of retail floor space to meet the definition of a retail food store.
Thank you.
Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Consider Resolution R 150811, authorizing the participation in the TML Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Safety Grant Program. Ms. Fowler.
Mayor and council, this resolution is requested to authorize the City of Cookeville to participate in the Tennessee Municipal League's Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Safety Grant Program. Now, the grant has a maximum reimbursement of $2,000, and it will provide funds for employee safety training to comply with our Tennessee OSHA requirements. It will help offset the cost of 32 hours of safety training on various topics for employees in all departments. The list of topics are there for your review. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have, and respectfully request your approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Consider, item E, consider approval, I'm sorry, consider approval of 2015 Wellness Screening Program Agreement. Again, Gail.
Mayor and council, I am pleased to bring for your consideration this evening the 2015 Wellness Screening Program Agreement between the City of Cookeville and Cookeville Regional Medical Center. The program will be offered on Tuesday and Wednesday, October 20th and 21st, from 7:00 AM until 9:00 AM. Will be held at the Water Quality Control Department on South Jefferson Coniments, and Mr. Kelly, once again, is welcoming us there. A makeup day is scheduled for Wednesday, October 28. The services being offered are shown on the screen and included in the contract cost. Prices shown are based on the agreement between CRM C and the city. Actual amounts paid by the participants will vary based on participation in the city's health insurance plan and preventive benefits provided under the Affordable Healthcare Act. The next slide, additional services are provided at the quoted price and at the expense of the requister. I've been asked a couple of times how long we've had this program in existence, and a capable city clerk over there went back and pulled minutes, it looks like March 1, 1990.
Wow.
And just FYI, the mayor at that time was Tony Stone, vice mayor was Joan Tansel, council members were Mike Patterson, Don Wagner, and Vaughn Howard. So that's how long it's been going on. The program does continue to be very popular with our employees, retirees, and spouses. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and respectfully request your approval of this agreement.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Consider approval of RFP for services of a financial advisor, Ringo Imel, and congratulations on being our new finance director, too.
Mayor and council members, we requested proposals for financial advisory services relating to our upcoming financing, capital improvements program, and debt administration. We received four proposals, which were evaluated and references were checked. We also conducted phone interviews of the top two proposals, and we are recommending this evening to you, Cumberland Securities, Inc., to be engaged as, by the city, as the financial advisors. They are out of Knoxville and have extensive financial advisory experience, having done more debt issues in Tennessee last year than any other firm. They were highly recommended to us by the other cities in Tennessee that I spoke to. A financial advisory fee will be $3 per bond with a minimum fee of $20,000, up to a maximum fee of $50,000. The fee itself will ultimately depend on what the amount of debt issue will be, and we will be bringing back to you for your approval any debt issue that we have at the appropriate times, and I will be happy to answer any questions you have, but would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? I would just say, I asked this in work session, but no one in the Cookeville area submitted a bid.
No. The four proposals were from Memphis, Knoxville, and Nashville.
Right, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item F, consider authorizing the city manager enter an agreement with HFR Design for Park Master Land Use Plan. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. It's my pleasure to bring to you for your consideration this item. We're requesting that you approve the city manager to enter into an agreement with HFR Design. Many of you may know them as Hart Freeland Roberts, that's what HFR stands for, but they've rebranded a little bit a few years ago, and HFR Design is the name of the company now. But they're an architectural and engineering firm with certified specialists in parks and recreation, planning and design, and we're asking them to help us develop a master land use plan for Parkview Park and Kane Creek Park. And their fee for doing that would be $17,000, plus reimbursables not to exceed $1,000. And part of this process will have several public meetings, and we will involve a citizens' task force to provide community input as we go. We will include members of the skateboard community, the youth leagues that utilize Kane Creek Park, and utilize Kane Creek Sportsplex, and Parkview leagues over there, the disc golf club members who participate and used a disc golf course at Kane Creek Park, mountain bikes, something else that we know there's an interest in, and mountain bike trails will include members of that, and other members of the community as council would like to appoint and sees fit to appoint to that task force as well. The plan will address issues, land use issues, such as a suitable and appropriate use of the old swimming pool and bath house at Parkview Pool, or Parkview Park, baseball field needs and uses at Parkview, the parking and traffic flow issues that we have over there, and other additional amenities and potential uses of park space there at Parkview, and also at Kane Creek, suitable and appropriate use of the old house on CC Camp Road, and expansion of parking and restroom facilities within the park, the possibility of adding mountain bike trails, feasibility and possible location of a new aquatics facility. I'll point out, too, that HFR Design has been working, has worked with Tullahoma, the City of Tullahoma, to do one of those very recently. But potential uses of the old animal shelter property, possible expansion of disc golf course, and again, additional amenities as the task force brings up and sees fit uses of that parkland. I'm happy today to have with us Mr. Jim Gillum, who is the senior vice president with HFR Design, and Kyle Dunn, who is the certified parks and rec person with HFR Design and a client manager with that firm, and they're with us here tonight, and so if you have any questions of me or of them, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion seconded. Discussion?
I'm looking forward to this. Just a statement, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay.
Sure.
Yeah, I, thank you, thank you, Mr. Woods. I appreciate Rick's presentation. And guys, HFR, thank you for doing your work here. I've had the opportunity to work with you guys back in my commission days, and you've, especially with schools, you guys have done some really good work, and I look forward to seeing what you guys can come up with, some of our land use, and big, look at the big picture as far as our parks. I just wanted to make a statement, because I just think it's, I just, this is very, very important to me, is that we've been, previous council, this council's been really, we've been busting our tails on economic and industrial growth for our city, and I'm really very, very pleased that we're catching up with quality of life. We're playing, we're not catching up, we're also in, with this, we are planning quality of life issues, which we're going to, we're going to, hopefully what that'll do for Cookeville is make us a great place to work, but also a great place to live. And I'm really pleased that, I really look forward to what you guys are going to come up with, and wish you the best of luck, and just do good for us, okay? Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Rick, I asked a question about this in a work session also, and I'm particularly interested and encouraged by this citizens' task force, because some of the best ideas we'll probably get are from folks out there who are, who are involved in these kind of things every day, and the various aspects and various interest groups. I'm assuming it's okay if someone reads about this, hears about this, and they have I'm assuming it's okay if someone reads about this, hears about this, and they have a particular interest, they don't necessarily have to be appointed, they could just call and, and, you know, you're going to, you'll limit the size, of course, you're not going to have 1,000 people on it, but folks who are interested and have credentials and interest could volunteer and say, hey, I'm interested in this, and I want to talk to somebody about maybe serving on this. I guess that's part of the way that...
We will have some public meetings with this process as well because we can't have an unlimited task force.
Right.
But we will have some public meetings where we'll get some public comment, and I'd be happy if they want to call our office and give us comments, whether they're serving on the task force and coming to all those meetings or not, we would love to have input, yes.
Great, thank you.
I'm very interested in the parks, particularly with physical activity, because Mayor asked me and the vice mayor to be involved with healthier Tennessee, which involves doing a lot of physical activity, and we've had one meeting, and we're going to have another meeting, but having parks where there's physical activity and getting people out biking and walking and jogging and skateboarding and getting people out because there's not any place really in Cookeville where you can do skateboarding, and I think that's an important issue, particularly at Parkview, where that can be made into a place for our young people, and the one thing I've noticed is that all skateboarders are thin. I think that's...
It's a doctor's, professional opinion.
Yeah, that's just a casual opinion, but this is a good thing for quality of life, which makes it a good place to live and raise a family, and we're getting some jobs, and our retail is doing pretty good, better than we thought, so I hope we can enter into this and do something that will make our existing residents happy and cause people to want to move here.
They said it all, so I agree that, you know, the quality of life is one of those things that makes your city as you're growing, it keeps the small town feel, and I continue to say that, we've got to make sure as we grow and add 2,200 jobs over the next 17 months that we don't lose what makes Cookeville great, and these are the kind of things that do that. So, any other comments? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Consider declaring as surplus two barns in the Highlands Business Park. Greg Brown?
Mayor and council, in order to approve the appearance of the business park, we would like to declare surplus two barns located there. One is located next to Bennett Road on the west end, and one is in the center of the park close to the interstate. Ask for your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion?
As I said in the work session, we can use the funds from these barns to work on the BRE, the Bennett Road Extension.
All right, seeing all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item A, consider awarding bids for body armor, vest carrier system, uniforms, and emergency response equipment for the police department. Chief Evans?
Mayor and council, we've solicited bids for a variety of police equipment, vests, and uniforms. What you have before you hear is, and I'm going to present these collectively with your permission. First of up is body armor, as you can see there, chief, law enforcement supplies a low bidder. And now we have vest carriers, CMS is a low bidder. Uniforms, we have a variety of vendors on uniforms. CMS has Parkas, Bluegrass, as you can see, has the bulk of the Class A and Class B uniforms, GT distributors, rain pants, galls, the rain coats, and then also galls has badges as well. And then last but not least is the emergency response equipment. You see there, Truckers Lighthouse and On Duty Depot, kind of had a split there on all of that equipment. All of these vendors meet specifications, and as far as emergency equipment, that is a budgeted item in our capital outlay, so I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the low bidders marked in yellow.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion?
Chief, didn't you mention in work session that 50% of the cost of one of these items, we have a grant for?
Yes, sir, the body armor. There is a grant for that, and we recover 50% of that.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item I, consider awarding bid for 2015 trencher and declare the 1997 model 5750 Vermer trencher as surplus, gas department director, Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council, the gas department took a invitation for bids on a trencher. I recommend that we do Premier Heartland as low bidder, meet specifications, and addition to that, this, the intended purchase of this is going to replace a 1997 trencher that has multiple mechanical issues, and I'm requesting that you declare that surplus so we can have that for resale.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
And item A, J, consider approval of the repair of the winch truck, electric department director, Tony Pete.
Mayor and council, we solicited quotes for the repair of a winch truck of ours. We had to take it off the workforce due to some problems with the boom rotation bearings and the main lift cylinder. Received two quotes capable of doing the job, and we'd recommend, for your approval, Altech for a quote of $13,811.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the hearing of any citizens that would like to speak to the council on any non-agenda item. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Come on up, you'll, a couple of points of order, come to the podium, state your name and address, and statement of no more than three minutes, maybe made on general items of relevance.
It's Andy Hill, and it's, I live at 1725 Parker Place. I'm here to talk about the skate park that's being discussed by Mr. Woods. Really why I'm here is to extend any assistance I may offer or request to be involved in the public park, skateboard park development. As a local skateboarder, I have the experience to effectively consult and work directly with the local skateboarders and skate park design staff. Understanding the sport is essential to building a good skate park. If the park does not entertain and challenge skaters, the park will not be utilized. A skate park cannot be approached like putting in a playground equipment, which is the prefab ramp concept. Concrete parks designed by public, by skateboarders have the best adoption by local and visiting skateboarders because they incorporate real world street obstacles like steps, rails, gaps, ledges, with custom elements like transitions and bowls. I also understand the expense of operating and maintaining ramps. I personally own indoor and outside half pipes, both requiring constant maintenance from wear and tear from skateboarding. The outdoor ramps were particularly difficult and expensive to maintain because of the weather. Concrete is more durable, thus requiring minimal maintenance and provides a superior skateboarding experience. So as a task force moves forward that Mr. Woods is putting together, I'd like to be involved as more than just, you know, a concerned citizen or a local skateboarding supporter. I would like to, you know, have as much impact as an official role that to be included in the skate park design or to help oversee any construction or offer any insight in the decision-making process. And additionally, I'd also like to volunteer my services to develop a first-class website, any branding to promote the park. I'm not trying to sell anything, I just want this park to be a success, something the city of Cookeville can be proud of, and a skate park that will benefit the youth of the community for generations. That's pretty much...
Andy, thank you, and congratulations on being the first member of the task force.
I've got Louis Vaden with me here, too. He's the second member, I guess, then.
We'll get, thank you, free comments, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we certainly appreciate you being here. I'll just say something real quick. We, obviously, everybody probably knows about the incident that happened at Capshaw School yesterday, and I have two children there and a daughter that teaches there, and I just want to, again, reinforce and applaud the efforts of the deputies of the Putnam County Sheriff's Department and air grade officers of the Cookeville City Police Department for acting quickly and swiftly and getting that under control and apprehending the individual and keeping our children safe and certainly alleviating potential tragedy. And we are blessed in this community with all of our law enforcement that are very well-trained, they all work together, and we're just very, very fortunate. So, thanks, chief, and certainly thanks to Sheriff Ferris for all the work they've done. And the school system, honestly, they've done a lot of training, too. That school had had a, had a training drill the morning before, and then this happened the next morning, so they acted perfectly, too, and so as a parent for children there, I certainly appreciate that. But anybody else have anything? All right, we will be adjourned.